All right. Dr. Charleston, if we could call roll?
Ms. Carisella.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Hayward.
Here.
Ms. Parlamis.
Here.
Ms. Rundell.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Calvez.
Here.
Dr. Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Cohen, if you would be able to do the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231. Notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on January 7th, 2025. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office in the administration building on the same date. The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education in partnership with the supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens. We have a lot of presentations and awards today.
Yes, we do. It's exciting. And I'm going to have the honor here of starting with to recognize Girl Scout Troop 95392. I'm going to go up there and do that, and we'll call them up and give them some awards and share all the great things that they've done. So I got to meet them and talk to them briefly over here. Face the camera right there. There we go. No, we're good. Are we ready? Come on, Girl Scout Troop 95392. We got this. So I had just the privilege to speak with them briefly and just talking about a lot of their accomplishments. We have Dylan Mangaro, Kaitlyn Menes, Corinne Myers, or Corinne Myers, excuse me, Darren Nonas, and Sarah Ring, Isabella Santa Cruz. So those are really award winners here for Girl Scout Troop 95392. And just to share a little bit about their accomplishments. All these Girl Scouts have been active since they were at the Daisy level in kindergarten, both at Byrd and Coleman Schools. In their time together, they have earned the Bronze Award in fifth grade for their work helping the Glen Rock Dog Park. Kaitlyn, Corinne, and Isabella all earned the Silver Award in middle school, and Isabella went on to achieve the Gold Award status for her project that created a sensory room at Central School. These girls have gone on countless field trips, including many townwide encampments at Camp Mason and Frost Valley. They have sold thousands of Girl Scout cookies. What's your favorite?
Thin mints.
Thin mints, yeah. All right, great. Very good. Well done. Did you bring any?
Not well done.
All right. Okay. That's fine. They have sold thousands of Girl Scout cookies and put in hundreds of hours volunteering. They have helped with the big sweep in Glen Rock Raking Leaves, food drives for local food pantries, and especially enjoy volunteering at Oasis and Patterson, helping students in the after-school program, as well as their yearly participation in townwide spring planting in downtown Glen Rock. And I say this with all seriousness. I think the idea of service just speaks a lot about your character. You'll all be very, very successful in life, and our country was really founded in the idea of civic virtue, the idea of giving up oneself for the betterment of community. And I think that's really the foundation of our country, and that's the history teacher in me coming out. So a round of applause for our Girl Scout winners. Dr. Robinson has some certificates for you.
We have Dylan Mangaro.
Dylan.
Kaitlyn Menes. Corinne Myers. Darren Nonas. Sarah Ring. Isabella Santa Cruz.
Come on, Dad, come out. I'll do very well. One for a picture, too, please. Yep. Okay, next to your daughter. Yes. Do you want Greg to take him on the show? Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for helping. Take care. And I think next we have National Merit Scholarship. We have Dr. Lauren Daniel, Director of Guidance, coming up, and we have some award winners there. So, Dr. Daniel, all yours.
Good evening, everyone. A National Merit Scholarship winner is a high-achieving high school student recognized for exceptional performance on the PSAT and MSQT, an honor that highlights some of the nation's most academically talented students. Administered by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, this award involves a rigorous selection process, including an evaluation of their academic record, essays, recommendations, and progression through multiple competitive stages. Finalists who are selected as winners receive scholarships, often sponsored by their chosen colleges or universities. This year, Jeremy Bedwell Cole will be attending Purdue University, and Ethan Tsang will be attending Ren Seeler Polytechnic Institute as National Merit Scholars.
And now, this is always fun. One of the better events that we get to do, we get to recognize our Teacher and Educational Specialist of the Year. And let's see, I'll start with my favorite principal first, my favorite, no, I'm just kidding. Let's have Ms., we'll go alphabetical here, so let's have Ms. Kraft in Byrd Elementary. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Members of the Board of Education, we're here tonight to celebrate someone truly special, someone who embodies the very best of what it means to be an educator, Ms. Karen Costello. For many of us, kindergarten is a distant memory, but for Karen, it's been her world for decades, as she's mastered the art of guiding our most youngest learners. Karen started her academic journey a little differently than some, earning her bachelor's degree in business from St. Thomas Aquinas, but she quickly found her true calling, going on to earn her master's in education from Myona College. Her teaching career began in the Bronx, where she spent six foundational years shaping young minds in kindergarten. And for the past 21 years, we've been incredibly fortunate to have her here at Byrd. She not only leads our kindergarten team, but truly sets the standards for excellence. Anyone who's spent five minutes in a kindergarten classroom knows it is no easy feat. It takes a unique blend of patience, energy, and unwavering dedication. Karen has all of that and then some. She's firm, but incredibly caring, and I often affectionately refer to her as the Byrd legend. It's not uncommon to walk by her classroom and find her right there on the carpet, fully engaged, playing and learning alongside her students. That dedication after all of these years is truly remarkable. Karen's impact is deeply felt by those who work alongside her every day. Her colleagues share so many wonderful testaments to her character and dedication. I'll just share a few quotes. Karen has done a brilliant job in fostering a positive learning environment. She is always positive despite the many challenges she faces on a daily basis. Karen demonstrates her effectiveness as an exemplary educator, colleague, and community member throughout her many years at Byrd. She has high expectations for her students and her young learners, and they love her dearly. What makes Karen truly exceptional is her commitment to growth. After decades in the classroom, she still finds ways to learn and deepen her craft, constantly refining her approach to ensure her students receive the best possible education. She's not just a great colleague, she's a phenomenal educator who inspires us all. Outside of school, Karen is just as dedicated to her passion. She loves to hike and read and swim in her pool. When she's not here with us, you can often find her spending quality time with her parents in Florida, or with her beloved sisters and her 10 nieces and nephews, who I'm sure keep her just as busy and entertained as her kindergartners. Karen, your impact on generations of students and on our entire school community is immeasurable. Thank you for your unwavering dedication, your passion, and for being the incredible teacher and person you are. Please join me in congratulating Karen Costello, the Byrd Teacher of the Year.
Next up, we have Ms. LaCroy in Central Elementary. Come on up.
Members of the Board of Education, we're here tonight to celebrate someone truly special, someone who embodies the very best of what it means to be an educator, Ms. Karen Costello. For many of us, kindergarten is a distant memory, but for Karen, it's been her world for decades, as she's mastered the art of guiding our most youngest learners. Karen started her academic journey a little differently than some, earning her bachelor's degree in business from St. Thomas Aquinas, but she quickly found her true calling, going on to earn her master's in education from Myona College. Her teaching career began in the Bronx, where she spent six foundational years shaping young minds in kindergarten. And for the past 21 years, we've been incredibly fortunate to have her here at Byrd. She not only leads our kindergarten team, but truly sets the standards for excellence. Anyone who's spent five minutes in a kindergarten classroom knows it is no easy feat. It takes a unique blend of patience, energy, and unwavering dedication. Karen has all of that and then some. She's firm, but incredibly caring, and I often affectionately refer to her as the Byrd legend. It's not uncommon to walk by her classroom and find her right there on the carpet, fully engaged, playing and learning alongside her students. That dedication after all of these years is truly remarkable. Karen's impact is deeply felt by those who work alongside her every day. Her colleagues share so many wonderful testaments to her character and dedication. I'll just share a few quotes. Karen has done a brilliant job in fostering a positive learning environment. She is always positive despite the many challenges she faces on a daily basis. Karen demonstrates her effectiveness as an exemplary educator, colleague, and community member throughout her many years at Byrd. She has high expectations for her students and her young learners, and they love her dearly. What makes Karen truly exceptional is her commitment to growth. After decades in the classroom, she still finds ways to learn and deepen her craft, constantly refining her approach to ensure her students receive the best possible education. She's not just a great colleague, she's a phenomenal educator who inspires us all. Outside of school, Karen is just as dedicated to her passion. She loves to hike and read and swim in her pool. When she's not here with us, you can often find her spending quality time with her parents in Florida, or with her beloved sisters and her 10 nieces and nephews, who I'm sure keep her just as busy and entertained as her kindergartners. Karen, your impact on generations of students and on our entire school community is immeasurable. Thank you for your unwavering dedication, your passion, and for being the incredible teacher and person you are. Please join me in congratulating Karen Costello, the Byrd Teacher of the Year.
Next up, we have Ms. LaCroy in Central Elementary. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Rebecca Johnson has been a first-grade teacher at Central Elementary School for 11 years. She is a nurturing and dedicated educator who goes above and beyond every day to create a classroom where all students feel valued, supported, and encouraged to succeed. She sets high expectations for every learner and skillfully differentiates instruction to meet the needs of both struggling students and those ready for enrichment. Her classroom promotes independence, executive functioning, and positive social interactions. You can often find her on the floor with her little ring, reminding people how to sit nicely. It's all grounded in a strong growth mindset. Becca is not only a passionate advocate for her students, but also a supportive and compassionate colleague, always ready to lend a hand, whether it's answering an academic or technology question, or offering professional development workshops filled with relevant strategies. Her collaborative spirit and willingness to share her creative resources make her an invaluable part of the Central School community. Rebecca's genuine love for teaching, especially her students, and her commitment to making sure every student is successful is evident in everything she does. Central is lucky to have her, and I'm proud to announce her as Central School's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
Next up, we have, excuse me, Mr. Thompson, Coleman Elementary. Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, Dr. Charleston, members of the Board of Ed. I'm Edward Thompson, proud principal, very proud principal of C.R.E. Coleman Elementary School, and I'm honored to be here this evening to speak about one of our Coleman family members. Ms. Sarah Paulo came to us six years ago and continues to be a key member of our kindergarten team. Sarah is a dedicated professional and one of the kindest people I've ever met. This point was noted at her final round interview with our then superintendent, who commented that Sarah has such kind eyes. Never heard that before, but it goes along with the rest of her, who's the whole package. Sarah exemplifies what it means to be a teacher. She carefully prepares and delivers engaging lessons and does her very best to meet each child's needs. As one of her colleagues shared with me, Ms. Paulo continually seeks new ways to inspire her class, and she does so through a calm, positive, and systematic approach. Sarah believes in the abilities of all children, regardless of the level of support they need or how they experience the world. She embodies inclusivity, kindness, and inspiration. Ms. Paulo's students know how much she loves them by the way she greets them each morning and says goodbye in the afternoon. The parents of her students appreciate her warmth, caring approach as well. As one parent shared, Ms. Paulo creates a loving and supportive classroom environment where children feel adored and look forward to each school day. A graduate of Loyola University in Maryland, outside of the classroom, Sarah continues to grow professionally as she pursues her master's degree as a reading specialist. It is an absolute pleasure to work alongside such a kind, I say kind so much, but it goes with Sarah, caring and compassionate professional, and we at Coleman School are lucky to have her as a member of our family. Coleman School's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sarah Paulo.
Ms. Gomez.
I'm proud to be here tonight to honor Amy Tillison as Hamilton's Teacher of the Year, a recognition that reflects her deep commitment to our students, staff, and school community. Amy began her teaching career in 2014 and joined the Hamilton team in 2017. During her time with us, she has taught both third and fourth grade, and this year transitioned into her current role as our reading specialist. In this position, Amy supports some of our most vulnerable learners with compassion, creativity, and high expectations. In just her first year, she has already helped students make tremendous progress, building their confidence and celebrating their strengths every step of the way. In addition, Amy has been an instrumental part of our district's initiative to strengthen our multi-tiered system of support. She serves as a lead member of Hamilton's INRS Committee, where she collaborates closely with colleagues and administration to refine the processes, ensure alignment, and bolster the systems we have in place to support our at-risk students. Thanks to her insight and leadership, significant progress has been made this year in maximizing the effectiveness of the services we provide and instruction we provide to our students, ensuring that they receive the most targeted instruction and support they need to thrive. Amy's contributions to Hamilton go well beyond her instructional responsibilities. She serves as a teacher mentor, generously offering her time and expertise to support new and veteran educators alike. She is a valued member of many committees at Hamilton, helping to foster a positive and inclusive environment for all. She has also played an important role in shaping instruction through her work on several district-wide curriculum initiatives and pilot programs, including the most recent phonics program that we selected. This year, Amy has also led professional learning for her colleagues, sharing effective strategies, and inspiring others to grow. I look forward to continuing to work with Amy as she leads the way in the future. Amy is not only known for her dedication to students, but also for her willingness to collaborate, problem-solve, and lift others up. She is someone colleagues turn to for insight, encouragement, and ideas. Whether she's providing a resource, lending a listening ear, sharing a funny story, or jumping in to help without hesitation, Amy is a true team player. Amy is the kind of educator who makes our school and district better every single day. Her impact is lasting, and I am so grateful to have her as part of Team Hamilton. Congratulations, Amy, and thank you for all that you do.
It's my pleasure to ask Ms. Girolando to come up to recognize our high school and middle school Teachers of the Year and Educational Specialists of the Year, Ms. Girolando.
Before I speak about each middle school and high school honoree individually, I want to take a moment to express my sincerest awe at what they represent collectively. I have the great pleasure of watching these professionals in action. What makes them truly great educators is their undying belief in the potential of each and every student, combined with their dedication to ensuring that each and every student has the opportunity to develop that potential. They work tirelessly to support their students, and each of them models the growth mindset inherent to a lifelong learner. Tonight's middle school and high school award recipients are champions of each and every student on their class roster or on their counseling caseload. Their students, their colleagues, and the administration are all the better for having the chance to work alongside them, and I thank each of them wholeheartedly. First, we have our Teacher of the Year for Glen Rock Middle School. Christine Heineman is a special education teacher. The excerpts that I'll read for each teacher are the comments from their colleagues who nominated them, and there were a number of colleagues that nominated each of our honorees tonight. Christine Heineman consistently exemplifies the qualities of a Teacher of the Year. She creates a welcoming and engaging learning environment where students feel comfortable and motivated. She pushes students to do their best work daily while providing them with appropriate support along the way. Chris is always available to her coworkers and works collaboratively as a valuable team member. Her passion, empathy, adaptability, and knowledge not only make her a role model for her peers, but for her students as well. Thank you, Chris. Our Glen Rock Educational Specialist of the Year is Ellie Manucheri, a school counselor. Ellie is a caring and dedicated school counselor who makes a meaningful impact at GRMS. She builds strong relationships with students, providing them with the support and guidance they need to succeed. Her commitment to mental health initiatives and collaboration with staff helps create a positive and inclusive school environment. Whether Ellie is helping students with their academic needs or supporting their well-being, she provides a warm, positive, judgment-free space for students and is proactive in getting them the support they need. Thank you, Ellie.
Congratulations, Ellie. Well done.
our school counselors. April consistently provides strong support for students, creating an environment where they feel comfortable and heard. She collaborates effectively with colleagues and brings thoughtful ideas to her work, making a positive impact. April's hard work and dedication are always evident. She connects with her students, taking the time to truly get to know them and understand their needs. Her commitment to their well-being and success is clear in the way she actively supports their academic and personal growth. Her passion for helping students thrive has made a positive impact on the entire school community. Thank you, April.
Who's this? Hey, CJ, how are you? Let's take a picture. Come on.
Our final honoree for this evening couldn't be here tonight because he is in China on the exchange. Mr. Sean Rowan is our High School Teacher of the Year. He teaches social studies. His colleagues had this to say about him. Sean puts a tremendous amount of effort into making his students feel comfortable and engaged in learning. He goes out of his way to make lessons meaningful and relevant. It is extremely evident how much Sean cares about his students and how he sets them up for success. His care translates to tireless effort each and every day. He is here for these students. From being on the announcements practically every week, to bringing six students to the DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Sean does it all, and he does it with passion.
Michelle, I hate to have you come back up here, but can we have all the principals and all the teachers of the year and the specialists of the year one more time for a group picture? Is that okay? Yeah, bring your plaques. that have been here for 25 years, I do have something. In just meeting CJ and speaking with April, April said that CJ was a big fan of eggs. So I brought eggs tonight for CJ. So CJ, come on up, and I'll give you some eggs from my chickens. April said he'd come up.
We wanted to recognize staff that have been here for such a long time, and it was Lisa's idea to start this, what we hope will be a new tradition. And so tonight, we're going to recognize teachers that have been here and staff for 25 years or more. And just to give some people an idea, we have some that have been here for 25 years and some that have been here for up to 42 years in Glen Rock. But we didn't put that on the sheet. We just said 25 years. A round of applause for everyone there. Nice job.
This is someone that I've really developed a nice relationship with. She is actually chaperoning, agreed to chaperone our students on a Finland and Estonia trip. I always enjoy visiting her classroom, Sharon Banana. Congratulations.
I remember this person when she first started. That just tells you how long I've been here. Leslie Brewer.
It is my pleasure to recognize for over 25 years of service, Ms. Karen Bouchard. Karen.
I don't know if she's here tonight. Susan Caverly.
I'm not sure if she is here tonight, but I think she was our former Princeton, she won an award for Princeton University for Teacher of the Year, and really has really helped to grow our art department here in Glen Rock. But Deb Chella, who's retiring this year. Deb?
I don't think she's here tonight, but I think we started together. We were in that beginning group. Toni Clark. She's not here, but we have a statement.
Dear board members, thank you so much for acknowledging our 25-plus years of service in Glen Rock Public Schools. I regret not being able to attend as I am working through a medical issue at this time. Thank you for your continued support over the years. Sincerely, Toni Clark.
I visit her classroom a lot, and every time I go in, she looks at me like I wear my glasses and looks up and is like, why are you bothering me? But a very lovely person, wonderful, wonderful instructor. Diane Conklin-Tanga, congratulations.
I worked with her mother-in-law at Central, Debbie Dymantis.
Another class I get to visit a lot and always a joy, always has her students working super hard, is Eleonora Delicio. Congratulations.
I don't think she's here, but let's recognize Andrea Dre.
Another person I get to speak with frequently, he took over our ice hockey team this year. He helps out as a site supervisor. He's actually going with Ms. Banana to Finland. I know he's only going to recruit ice hockey players in Finland. But most importantly is when I visit his classroom, he's just such a wonderful teacher. We're fortunate to have him. Sergio Fernandez.
Congratulations to somebody I also go way back with, Monica Fonteo.
It's my pleasure to recognize, I always thought as a former coach, athletic director, I think sometimes really good coaches can also deliver in the classrooms. They learn those same skills, and this is certainly no exception here. This person does a wonderful job in both realms, and that's Stacy Gallo. Congratulations.
Definitely another teacher that really goes above and beyond when I visit, always working in the terms of class that she has individually with students, like really helping, moving them along. Always has a smile on her face, Effie Kovales. Congratulations.
When I think of veteran teachers, I sometimes, when I say this in a nice way, is sometimes they could be a little bit resistant to change. But this teacher here really took on something a couple of years ago and ran with it and made what I thought Bird Elementary, this pilot program, the best that it can be, and we thank her for that. Ms. Cindy Loto.
I'm so glad I got this name because she started the middle school, and when Hamilton reopened, I went from Central to Hamilton, and they're like, oh, you're going to be teaching with somebody at the middle school. She wasn't even McCluskey then, she was Cal Dorella. I'm like, who's that? And I'm so glad she came because she's not only a wonderful teacher, she's a really good friend of mine, Kim McCluskey.
This teacher, again, over the last couple of years, has really just taken on a lot more responsibility and leadership roles, and really appreciate that. It helps to make for a really good and sound culture and climate in the building, and so we thank her for that and for all that she's done over these 25-plus years. Megan McDermott.
I'd like to congratulate Heather McDermott.
I know if people remember, a couple of years ago, I agreed to teach some elementary classes, and I'm still recovering from that. But in particular, I really have grown to appreciate like all the work our guidance counselors do at the elementary level. I'm amazed at what they get done in a day, and they're always on roller skates, running around, and they just care so deeply about our kids, and they do wonderful work with their kids, and this is definitely one of the top ones that we have. Ms. Kristia Moger.
I cannot believe you're part of the 25-year club. Congratulations, Lisa Morales.
I don't believe she's here either, but in high school, middle school, if you want to get anything done, you have to go through her, and that's Bev O'Hearn. All right, congratulations, Bev.
I remembered this person too when they first started. I'm regretting this decision of doing this with Dr. Charleston now. Congratulations, Doug Tanga.
Diane, you want to take this home for Doug?
I don't think he's here, but I also enjoy visiting his class over at Bird, and I have a little bit of a funny story. Apparently, every year, he wins this once-in-a-lifetime golf trip. It always happens during the first three professional development days of the school year. So I'm wondering next, but you already told me he wanted next year, so the year after that would be three times in a row, and I think we're going to have to say no to that. But congratulations to Joe Parsons.
Congratulations, Tara Pichinich.
So I have the privilege of recognizing this person, and I've worked with a lot of people, a lot of different roles over the years, and for what I could say for her is that she's a fierce advocate for members of the GREA, but also someone that I consider a friend, someone that I can work with, we can find common ground. I think very highly of her. Again, always enjoy visiting her in the media center. Always tells me her library is not big enough, and she wants more books. But she's just good people, and I really enjoy working with her. So Lisa Thomaselli, and I did bring you eggs as well.
I don't know if she's here. I didn't see her, but congratulations, Iris Peery.
Oh, she's here. See you. I'm sorry, Iris.
I think I saw her earlier. There's a big crowd out there, so I hope she's here. But funny story, over at Central, every time I walk into her classroom, I can't sneak in there because the floors really creak a lot, and it's super loud, so I do feel bad for that. I totally put a work order in. But just a wonderful teacher, always has a smile, always welcomes me into her classroom, Mary Ann Tullem.
Sharing regards from the Coleman School class of 1994. They put me up to this. I'd like to congratulate Betsy Kaufman for countless years, and if people reach out and say 30 years later, they remembered and know that you're retiring this year, that we need to recognize you, you get a special call out. So thank you very much.
You were in her, you had her as a teacher?
She's my second favorite, third favorite teacher. Top two.
Wow. Well, congratulations to Betsy, who's also retiring this year after 42 years of teaching. She was a Coleman student as well, so she's never left Coleman, ever. And she will always be part of Glen Rock. I'd like to congratulate Bonnie Zinnerman.
And again, another teacher I get to go visit, she shares a classroom, always, again, always welcomes me in, talk about, usually we get to talk about the weather and some other things, but just gives me some good insight into things that are going on. Just such a pleasure. Mrs. Zinnerman, congratulations.
So that will do it for our people we're going to recognize. We would love to do a group photo if we can, if we could somehow get everybody up here and just kind of squeeze them in. So let's come on up. If you have a certificate, please do. Principals, you can come up if you want as well.
Principals, you can come up if you want as well. All right, so we have a quick presentation here. So Keith, whenever you're ready to pull that up. Thank you. All right, everybody, so we have a quick presentation here. As you may be aware, in, I guess, October, November?
October, November.
Yeah, around October, November, we present the NJSLA scores. And that's mandated by the state. And so we do that. And that's all the individual grades. We do subgroups as we can and things like that. And there's a template that they give us. But every now and then, we do a score comparison to really comparative districts. And so, is it turning back there? There we go. Okay. So just as a reminder, for NJSLA, we test in a couple ways. Science, you can see the three grades there. English Language Arts, basically grades three through nine. And then math, grades three through eight. And then for algebra, just grade nine. And then anybody in geometry and algebra, only through grade nine. So that's the data that we're given from the NJSLA testing. I'm going backwards here, Keith. There we go. So how do we come up with this comparative data, which is, can be challenging, right? Because there's no, the state has stopped with these district factor groups. And to give you an idea, you could see there that district factor groups were big when I started, when I started teaching. I think I stopped them in 2004. So the district factor groups are based on a variety of things. And I'm not going to read those through you, to you, but you could see there what, how they come up with your district factor group. If you remember, like the As, like if you're a Group A, those are the districts that used to be known as the I district, right? Those are your most impoverished or poverty-stricken districts. And then you work your way up to a J district. As you can see, Glen Rock was originally an I district in '90, but was changed to a J in '20. And whether Glen Rock is a J today or not, I don't know. Last time it was updated was in 2004. And whether any districts today are a J district that were in 2004, we just don't know. We don't have that data. But we go on what we think, you know, is best. So we used the district factor groups from 2004 to do a comparative analysis here. Keep on going backwards. So in Bergen County, there are 67 districts that include elementary and middle school scores, right? So you can see 21 are I districts, and basically that's the second highest district factor group. And there are six J districts, and that's Glen Rock, right? Glen Rock is one of those. But Glen Rock lives in multiple worlds, right? Because we're a K to 12 district. So there are 43 that include just ninth-grade scores, right? Nine I and three Js. One of those is obviously us in this data here. Then overall, you can see there are 94 Is, 23 throughout the entire state that are Js. Again, applicable in this case to Glen Rock. And 44 Is and 11 Js that include ninth-grade scores. So is there like a simple K to 12, like a district factor group? Not really. Like I said, Glen Rock lives in two worlds there. So when we go to the next slide here, I hope we get to it. So we looked at data, went back to 2022, and this most recent one, '24. So we broke it up a couple of ways there. So you'll see in red and the pinkish color, you'll see our Glen Rock scores. Then you'll see all of Bergen County. We took every school, I believe it was close to 70 schools, I think, in Bergen County, in '22 and '24. And then we went, again, we're assuming that Glen Rock is still a J district, and we're assuming that all the J districts still are and all the I districts still are. So again, the data may be outdated there. But we took all the I districts in '22 and '24, and then all the J districts in '22 and '24. So that's kind of how we broke up the data. So you'll see six bars as we go across and through this. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Van Ness to kind of go through the scores and talk a little bit about them.
Yeah. So when we present in the fall, we have to do that, and we only have our own data. But in the spring, they release the school performance reports. And you can look up every school's data. But they also release, it ends up being 18 different spreadsheets that have every school in the state. And so by going through that, I can kind of compile all this data. I did it last, for the scores, in 2022, which, if you remember, is the first year of testing after COVID. So that was kind of catching everybody in that, in that time right after COVID. And now we're doing it two years later. So that's kind of where we are kind of historically, and just kind of keeping those things in mind. So the first thing, I skipped one. Hang on, go back to science. Here we go. So first one we'll look at is science, because it's really only three tests, grades five, eight, and 11. You can see across all of the demographics, the eighth-grade scores are the lowest. It's just that way, all over. Ours are, if you look at our fifth-grade and 11th-grade scores, they're right there with all of the other J districts, right? Got to remember that the sample sizes are very different in these things. When you look at all of the Is or all of New Jersey or something like that, you're talking dozens or hundreds of schools versus, you know, Glen Rock, where we're a lot smaller there. We can see these tracking pretty closely with the state. We're looking at eighth-grade science. We started a new curriculum, Open Sci Ed, this year because we really weren't finding that the science curriculum we were using before was really matching up with where it is. So we're excited about moving that forward and looking at continued growth with science. With Language Arts, looking at elementary, again, we're in red and pink there. The other thing I want to caution you is, when you look at the red bar compared to the pink bar, those are different children, right? Those are children from two years apart. So be careful to think about, you're not comparing the wrong kids to the wrong kids. So on this chart, it would actually be looking at the red in ELA III. Two years later, they're in ELA V, right? So keep keeping that in mind. It's not the neighbors there. We're really happy with these scores. The numbers are right there, right there with all those J districts at or above them in fourth and fifth grade. Third was one that we were a little bit concerned about a couple of years ago, but we're seeing some growth with that. We're happy with that. A couple of years ago, I was talking, when I was presenting scores in Language Arts, it was grades three, six, and nine that we were a little bit concerned about. You can see, again, six was a little bit low, but we're seeing good growth there. We're not up with the J districts in six, but in seven, we're right there with them or above them. And same with eight. So I think six is a transition year here, and we're really taking care of students and taking care of them and social, emotional beings. And we catch them up with the academics as we go through. So happy to see where that is. In high school, we had, I told you before, we were concerned about six, eight, and nine. You can see a lot of growth from two years ago, from ninth grade to ninth grade in 2024. So we're real happy to see that work that we're doing there also in ninth grade. Math gets a little bit more complicated, and I'll explain why in a second. But this is elementary math here. Really strong scores with Glen Rock leading the pack in all three of those grades. We're real happy with the math curriculum. It's everyday math. It's a very spiraled curriculum. It's working really well, a lot of resources for the teachers. Really proud of the achievement we have in elementary. Before I talk about middle, I want to talk about what complicates it. So what I have here are two math progressions. Two years ago, all of our kids did the bottom progression. They went from Math Six to Math Seven pre-algebra to Algebra One in the eighth grade to Geometry in the ninth grade. We changed that a couple of years ago, and now we have two progressions, which is about a quarter of our students do Math Six, pre-algebra, Math Eight, and then Algebra One. And about three-quarters of our students do the track that we had before. The reason I bring this up now is because it makes it really hard to compare apples to apples here. It's hard to compare our Math Eight scores to somebody else's Math Eight scores because there are even neighboring districts right now where we have about a quarter of our students take Math Eight. One of our neighboring districts has none of their kids take Math Eight. They all go to Algebra One still. And another neighboring district, it's about 50/50, right? So if you compare our scores to theirs, it's complicated because you're looking at, you're dividing them differently. So I just want to caution that before we move on to that. And then I'll have a couple of representations to try and unpack that a little bit, a couple different ways. So here's middle school math. You see sixth grade on the left, a little below the rest of the J districts, but right in there. Seventh grade, very close also. Math Eight, you're not going to see that red bar for the first year because we didn't do Math Eight in 2022. We only started doing that in 2023. And in 2024, it's pretty low, right? The number is low. But again, this is 25% of our kids, and it's the most needy math students. So we're continuing to look at that. We're continuing to look at the curriculum, continue to drive that in. What we're happy to see is that when we move on to Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two, that really big growth from 2022 to 2024 in Algebra One, where less than half of our students were proficient on the test, and now it's more than three-quarters. The geometry scores look great, also moving up because we've straightened that out. And Algebra Two, I do, I would love to tell you, look at this, we're great. We have 100% of our Algebra Two kids passing. But I need to caution that, it's 13 kids, right? Because it's a really small sample size. So 13 of our most advanced kids are taking Algebra Two because this only includes ninth grade, is the way it goes. So those are our most advanced kids. So another way to try and visualize this, to see kind of how do I, how can we compare against other schools? How are we doing? Is to think about kind of the bigger question of how many kids passed the test for which they sat, right? Whether they're in Math Eight or in their Algebra or whatever. So what you're seeing here on the screen is all of the kids who took Math Eight, this is just 2024, not 2022. All of the kids who took Math Eight, all the kids who took Algebra One, all the kids who took Geometry. I showed you these already. But if I were to combine them and just say the number of kids that took Math Eight and Algebra One and compare my district to every other district, this is what the graphs look like, right? Can't do this for 2022 because I don't have that data. It would take me a long time to dig backwards to get it. If I, so what we're saying here is basically an eighth-grade kid right now, whether they're taking Math Eight or Algebra One, we can compare that to all of the other districts in these groups, all of Bergen County, the I districts, J districts. And that number is really comparable. It's getting really close. If I were to combine it with Geometry, it looks even a little tighter, right? We're right up there. So we still have work to do in math. We continue to work with math. We still have some work to do in eighth-grade science especially. We're working on that. But we're really proud of the progress we're making. The next thing I decided to do this year is, because we're often asked, how do we do, compare to the people around us that we want to compare to, the schools? We don't really want to do head-to-heads against neighboring schools because that could be a little bit sticky. You can certainly do that. The data's public, you can go look at. But so what I wanted to do is find what, with these lists, you find them online easily, the top 10 whatever districts in whatever. So niche.com has the best schools, school district in Bergen County, top 10. Here they are. We are on their list at number 11. So here are the top 10 in Bergen County according to them. Let's see how we did compared to them. So same kind of process at each of these levels. So here is, I don't know, Keith, here, oh, there we go. Can you move back one? There we go. Here's science. Same kind of story. Glen Rock is in red, everybody else is in yellow. We are at or above, or above in two of the grades. Science, we're just tiny bit behind them. Very happy with that. Again, we're looking at science, but everybody's looking at science, trying to figure out what's going on. In Language Arts, you can see across the board, we see a little bit of slip in sixth grade and seventh, we're nearly caught up. And then we're back to above or equal to all of the Bergen top 10. And then the last one for math, oops, Keith, can you help me out here? For math, you can see that Math Eight, that small sample size, we're still working on that. Every other grade, though, we're exceeding the comparable districts in Bergen County. You know, I have all of the data. If people have specific questions, I can go through it with you. All of the data is publicly available. Well, first of all, congratulations. But also, I think we missed that slide. Here it is. All of the data is available on the website. It's lots, it's lots of schools. So trust me, it's deep. But I do want to congratulate our teachers, our administrators. It's really good when we pull this out. It's a lot of work to do, but, sorry, I don't do it every year. But it is nice to see it visually of, we're holding our own, we're doing a nice job.
So I'd like to add a couple of things. One is that I don't, I don't believe or follow rankings. I feel like they're really just there to get clicks on websites or to sell magazines. All I really care about is how our Glen Rock students do, and they do very well. And it's really because of our teachers and our administrators that really work hard each and every day to work with our students. We live in a good, supportive community where our parents are invested in their children's education. I think if you put invested parents with good teachers and good students, you have wonderful results. And so that's what I care about. I'm always hesitant. I don't like these types of presentations. I'm tired when people compare us to other school districts. I'm not concerned at all what other school districts do and how their scores are. That's irrelevant to me. I only care about Glen Rock and how we do. And I think that we're doing a really fine job. And I thank our teachers immensely for all that they do. I'm very proud of our students, and I'm very proud of the community. So presentations like this are few and far between because I think they feed a narrative that rankings seem to matter. I'm telling you that, I don't think they do. So I do thank Mr. Van Ness for putting this together. I think the scores, the charts just show that while there's work to do here in Glen Rock, there always will be in any district, we're trending in a really good direction. And I just thank, I thank the teachers, administrators, the students for that. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. I think that the way that you put the presentation together, it really helped to illustrate, you know, some of the things that you've been saying. And I know that that took probably a very long time to do, so I'm appreciative of the efforts there. I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Rendell?
So thank you very much for putting it together. It's really nice to see, it's very clear. And I agree with Dr. Charleston that, like, I don't agree, I don't like the rankings talk, and I'm very much so on board with what he just said. But I do think it's a good opportunity to say thank you to our teachers and the students and everybody. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to say thank you.
All right. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you for the presentation. And thank you also for pointing out where there was growth because you can't compare 2022 third graders, 2024 third graders, because they're two separate groups of kids. And I think a lot of times when things go out there, that's what's being compared. So it's nice to see the 2022 third graders and then how they went and showed growth through, like, in their fifth-grade scores. So thank you for pointing that and including that because I think that's an important piece.
Ms. Parlamis?
Thanks for that presentation. It was great. The, I have a question on the Math, the Math Eight. I know that it's a, there's like a two, it's going to be about a two-year reflection in their results because it takes time to go through the program. Is that correct? It'll be, because you're, I see the dip here in Math Eight for, when you compare It'll be, because you're, I see the dip here in math eight for, when you compare from Bergen, but you think it'll, it'll basically mesh out in two more years is what, is what I'm hearing because it takes time for it to, is it?
I think what we're seeing, like, when we look at the geometry and algebra two scores going up and algebra one scores going up, more kids are getting the math instruction that they need at the time that they need it. And so those longer term things are, are what we want to see, right? And so the eighth grade scores are not strong, right? But those students are getting the support that they need. And when you look at, they were in math eight last year, they're in algebra one this year, those scores are much, much nicer than they were before. So I think it might be, I think what I'm hearing you say is there might be a little bit of delayed effect. It's kind of like when we're talking about sixth grade scores are a little bit lower than we would like, but by the time they, even language arts even, right? But by the time they get to seventh or eighth grade, they're right where they need to be. So, you know, if you think about a temperature check as we're going, but we're not done yet, right? It's not baked all the way. We're checking it as we're going. So, you know, I'm not, I'm less worried about what the scores are in sixth grade than I am to see they're moving forward and growing, and by the time they're in eighth and ninth, look at where we are. You know, that's, that's the goal is, is a developed kid, not every single day is perfect. Does that make sense?
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you.
Just want really quickly, before we get to public comment, just talk, we have the CUSAC scores there. It's, we're on a three-year continuum. Congratulations again to our administrative team, our teachers, our students. These scores, we would not get these high scores without, that all their efforts. So Glen Rock is considered again for the three years, next three years, to be a high performing district. And again, it's a lot of work on our end. I think it's close to 100 indicators of things that we have to meet and do and provide, and those are the things that we do each and every day, whether it's statement of assurances, mandated reporting, just a ton of different things, human resources, personnel files, whatever. So we're mandated just to have this posted. The board doesn't need to take action, but it's on the agenda. We're accepting these scores, and again, congratulations to everyone.
So at 8:20, I would like to open the public comments section on, on board action items only. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello again.
Hello.
I just want to thank the Board of Education tonight and the Glen Rock administration for the opportunity to celebrate our teachers tonight. On behalf of the GREA, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say my name, but you already know who I am. Melissa Thomas-Elli, GREA President, Hamilton School Librarian. On behalf of the GREA, it is my great honor to offer my heartfelt congratulations to all our Teachers of the Year and all the members of the 25-plus club. Every day, our teachers show up with passion, creativity, and a commitment to helping our students grow, not just academically, but as people. Our teachers' hard work, often behind the scenes, is the foundation of the success we see in our classrooms. We would also like to take a moment to say thank you to all the families of our students for all your support. We could not do this without you, and it's great to be working in such a good community who cares about their neighborhood and their schools and their children and each other. It's a great place to work. And tonight is just a glimpse of some of the amazing things that the teachers and people do to make this happen within the walls of our schools. And I want to give a final thank you to Dr. Charleston for always being willing to meet with me as the union president and for the positive and open communication and collaboration that we have. So this is a great way to end the school year, and I hope this brings forth a new tradition between all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment?
Colleen Manley, 70 Ridge Road. Since I always come up, I figured I would come up, and I just want to say I came here, I just want to thank the board and the GREA for that wonderful celebration of teachers and especially the teachers with 25 or more years of experience. I actually came to see a lot of my friends from Coleman School who guided my children many years ago. And I also want to thank Mr. Van Ness and Dr. Charleston for that presentation. I too don't think about rankings. I like looking at data, and I like reflecting on it and learning from it, and I appreciate that type of analysis and sharing it with the public. So thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no additional comments from the public, we'll close public comments at 8:23.
Dr. Robinson, would it be okay if we skip the first part of personnel and move right to our action items and then go back to personnel? Would that be okay? That'd be wonderful.
I'm just scrolling down.
So we just move motion to approve resolutions P1 through P3?
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to discuss P1 through P3? Mr. Hayward, seconded by Ms. Calvez. All right. Any questions or comments?
I do. I would like to, to speak in particular about P2, Nicole Hirsch, who will be appointed tonight as our supervisor of elementary education. I'd like to just talk a little bit about Nicole. She went through a pretty rigorous process to get to this appointment tonight. Ms. Hirsch holds a BA in mathematics and MBS in education from TCNJ, as well as a master's in special education from William Patterson University. After a short time teaching 10th grade math in France, Ms. Hirsch found her way to Glen Rock Schools in 2011. She taught third grade at Byrd for seven years. In 2018, Ms. Hirsch left the classroom to become our district's first elementary math coach in a role that she held for six years. During that time, Ms. Hirsch pioneered the district's instructional coaching program, growing it from inception to a robust support system for elementary educators. As a math coach, Ms. Hirsch collaborated with district administration and teaching staff on numerous impactful initiatives, including curriculum development for K-5 mathematics, the design of standards-based math benchmark assessments, and the revision of grading rubrics for elementary report cards, the implementation of individual and group coaching cycles offered across four elementary schools, the development facilitation of teacher professional learning aligned with district goals, the articulation alignment of K-5 mathematics practices with colleagues at the secondary level. This school year, Ms. Hirsch has been working as Hamilton's Intervention Strategies Coach, contributing to the highly successful implementation of the WIN period and best practices in MTSS, which is a district goal. In this role, she has also worked with students as a BSI math teacher, making a positive impact on their learning and development. And I can attest to this, Ms. Hirsch is globally respected in our district as a colleague and as an instructional leader, setting a high standard of academic excellence in each role that she has held. And most importantly, Ms. Hirsch exemplifies the best of Glen Rock teachers and staff, always putting our students' best interests at the forefront of her work. Two references here in the district shared also, Ms. Hirsch is a collaborative and approachable educator who works seamlessly with colleagues and staff. She is well-versed in Glen Rock's elementary curriculum and consistently aligns her elementary coaching to district goals and standards. Ms. Hirsch also demonstrates a strong command of student data, using it effectively to identify learning needs and support teachers to tailor instruction to support student growth. And then finally, another reference shared, Nicole Hirsch is a highly collaborative and dedicated educator, making her an excellent candidate for the elementary supervisor position. As an instructional coach, she has built meaningful relationships with teachers and positively influenced classroom practices and student outcomes. Nicole brings a clear and compelling vision for elementary teaching and learning. She has strong leadership potential and a commitment to continuous growth. I am confident in her capacity to lead curriculum, instruction, assessment, and programs that will support and enhance elementary education. As superintendent, cannot think of a better person to, to start this brand-new position and help continue to move our elementary schools forward, and I highly recommend her to be appointed tonight as the supervisor of elementary education.
Just a question about P2. The title is Supervisor of Elementary Education, but includes gifted intelligence for K-8, right? K-6.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If you could call a roll, please.
Ms. Carrasella?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Rendell?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Everything passes. We have a new supervisor.
I just wanted to thank you all so much for this opportunity. Over the last 14 years, I've had the privilege of serving in a variety of roles here in Glen Rock, and each one has really deepened my appreciation for how truly special this district is, and we saw it tonight in the celebration of our students' achievements, in the honoring of our Teachers of the Year, and in the recognition of our teachers who have been here for 25 or more years. I'm really excited to get to collaborate once again with all of the elementary staff, our teachers, our incredible teachers, and our principals at the elementary level, and to support and amplify the wonderful things that are being done. I'm truly grateful, and I look forward to getting started. Thank you so much.
All right, so getting to our discussion items and job descriptions. So you may, the board remembers that we restructured, for lack of a better term, the business office. And in particular, we were able to, through attrition, not replace a position, and then other people in that office were going to take additional responsibilities. So as such, the three job descriptions that are revised all include aspects of the job description that we are abolishing. And then as, again, another reminder is that this was a significant savings for the district, even with the additional salaries, the increase in salaries for the three that are taking on those additional roles. So this will be on the next agenda for approval, and then those people would start in that new role at that, sorry, at that new salary on July 1st.
Any questions? All right. Onto, sorry, policy.
So for policy, we have one here, policy P2361, acceptable use of computer networks and computer resources. So the policy changed in response to Google requiring parental consent for users under 18 to access third-party applications that integrate with Google Workspace for Education. Not providing such consent to use Google services and additional third-party applications could impact children's ability to complete assignments and collaborate with peers. So and as for the section being removed from the policy, we reached out to Strauss SSM, and they're unfamiliar with that, so it must have been a carryover from years gone by. We've never fined anyone $250, so it's just best to move that. We would never do that anyway. But the first part of that is required. And so you know, that'll be added into our acceptable use policy. Where parents each year would have to click that they recognize this, and I think Ed's probably familiar with this as well. It's happening in all, all school districts. So that's the first reading of this policy. The second policy is Dr. Robinson?
Yes. All right, so uploaded, you'll see our first read now for policy 7250, naming and renaming of school facilities. So this policy just will update with the information that we discussed at our last meeting, so you should see that reflected here. The discussion is open.
I have one comment on it. I thought it was great. My one thought, and I've mentioned it in the other two readings that we've had, is that I, I don't believe the school name should be after anyone who is not yet deceased. It's my personal thought that if you name it after someone who's living, you always have that, and it's not likely, but the person could have a reputation change. They could be a highly political issue. There could be different associations with the, with the person. So I still recommend that we have a caveat on there. If it's a school building name, that it would be after a deceased person. Again, I think it's a very remote situation since we have all our schools named, but since we are doing a formal naming policy, I thought that would be best practice.
All right. I guess, so what I'll end up doing is like a straw poll for like each thing that comes up, and then we'll see as a board if there's an appetite to change. So we'll go just through all of them and then just do that. Go ahead.
In comment to that, I actually had the same view when we first went through and we looked at some of the samples, and then I evolved my thinking a little bit just to consider it's just could be part of the review process, I guess, when we're looking at it, and I don't know if I want to close the door in case there is a really great reason to do it. So I was, it was one of my notes, too. So I kind of got over it when I started thinking of it that way. So it's my only comment.
Yes, okay. Any other comments on the policy? I'll say that I agree that that's a risk. I do agree that that's a risk, and I thought that some of, in speaking with former board members that have been long tenured here, some of the most common naming requests are for educators that are retiring. And so not necessarily like school buildings, but maybe the, you know, media rooms or like classrooms and things like that. And if we do make that decision, then we would end up having to do that. But I would say also, it's always likely, especially if we're naming like a room or another part of school property, that you could also rescind it if there was ever a problem.
My distinction is only for school building names, not for rooms, or it's for the actual school building name.
Okay, all right. Do we want to do a straw poll? All right, so the straw poll would just be, you know, do we want to make an edit to say that only school buildings should be named after those that are deceased or leave it as is for any future board to have discretion? So the straw poll is to say, yes, leave it as it is. If you want to leave it as it is, then just please raise your hand. If you want to change it, then just keep your hands lowered. Does that make sense? Okay. One, two, three, four. Okay. So then we can change it, and I'll make the edit on the next read to say that we'll just have the buildings, only buildings shall be named after deceased. All right, onto no governance items. If somebody would like to mention something, please just bring it up. And then IMP.
Sure. I'll go real fast. I have in backup for you a draft of just the title page of the summer work. So for those of you new to the board, every year we budget for curriculum work and planning work for, for teachers to pay at an hourly rate. And generally, by now, I have the list ready for you, for your approval, so that they know they can do it in the summer. The tricky thing this year is that we, we have budgeted about $40,000 for summer work, and right now my list is at about $46,000, which I'm not worried about because some of that we can use out of Title II funds, which is about professional development, and that's what I'm planning to do. The reason this list isn't finalized yet is because we don't have any idea what title money we're getting this year. Things are delayed, and so I'm, I'm holding off as long as I can. I'll have the list finalized for you by the 23rd, and we'll have it. This is basically the title page to what'll be a document. We'll have 16 pages that lists all the staff members that are doing, were doing the work and the work that they'll be doing. But I want to give you a preview of kind of the scope of what we're doing. You can see that it's in all the buildings, it's in all the departments. We're hitting a little piece of everything as we go. So hopefully, we will have those numbers from the state, which is from the federal government, which is from the Department of Education. So we'll, we'll hopefully get those soon. So we'll hopefully get those soon. Yeah, where it says coordinated by, that's the supervisor or principal that's coordinating the work. That's all.
Any other questions?
So we have here the 2526 Virtual or Remote Instructional Plan. This is a yearly plan that came out after COVID, something that we're mandated to have. The Board of Education has to pass that, and then we submit it to the county for approval. There's been no changes for the last, I think, three years. It's just a mandated plan we have to have in place. That's if your school district is closed for three or more days due to some unforeseen circumstance, then you would implement this plan. The county would still have to approve you going to a remote plan. The best example I can come up with, I believe Cresco was flooded a couple of years ago, was that right? And they had to implement their plan that they had in place. Doesn't count for snow days, you could be closed for a week. It doesn't count for that, it counts for something else. So we don't ever anticipate using it, but it is a plan that we've run through, and we're comfortable administratively at the staff level that we're able to execute it. So this will be on the June 23rd for approval, and then we'll submit it to the county. It's due by July 31st, and since we don't have any meetings over the summer, we've got to get it done.
Thank you. If no other questions, we can move on to special services.
Judge McKays, want me to update on the early childhood program? We've had parent tours, right now she has 10 student tuitions registered. She has a couple still interested. I think we'll get anywhere between 11 to 15, a couple more. That's just tuition-paying students, not the special needs students that are part of the program, and the preschool integrated, or preschool autistic programs, or preschool disabled programs. So right where we should be, we're happy with the numbers for the first year, and we think it will continue to grow. What I'm very excited about this program, obviously, but the part I'm also equally excited about is that we still have over 40 high school students that want to work in the child development class to work with these students. And I think that's just really cool and neat, and that's something that was one of the reasons why I wanted it here, was for that as well. So, seems like it's all coming together, and should be, should be ready to go.
Excellent. All right, on to management and community.
So we met, Ms. Carisella, you want me to take it? Oh, I'm sure you do, thank you. So we met the other day, I think in mid-May, to really have our last meeting, as is ad hoc committee, to talk about a couple of things. And one of the reasons that it would be the last meeting, is a lot of these things that are here, we are a COW, should be brought up in front of the whole board. There's nothing that's necessarily confidential that we wouldn't discuss there. So a couple of items that came out, there, you're aware of some of them. One was a chain of command, and having a graph, or a sheet, or a chart, right, a flow chart of like where people should go to. I'll look at that a little bit deeper in the summer, but what was presented at the committee was not accurate or best practice in terms of how a chain of command works. And I think a good example would be, there are certain decisions to stop with the teacher, and it is in there, that they don't come to the principal, to Greg, or to me, and certainly not to the board. But that chart had kind of everything ending at the Board of Education, and that's just not how the chain of command works. Like, that's not how a district couldn't function that way, if everything was being brought up to a board level, or my level. I would be busy all day long. So we trust that we have, we trust our teachers, right? We trust our administrators, that they make decisions, are able to effectively run their classrooms and buildings. And so a lot of those things do stop there. So we'll look at some more. I know Ms. Carisella talked about like a business card, I think someone had, of something on the back of it, that they could hand out and say, hey, like this is the chain of command. So we'll do a little bit of a deeper dive into that, maybe we'll have something to share in the fall. But for now, we're just going to continue to remain with the policy, which is chain of command, and everything should be addressed at the lowest level possible.
And just for background, for anybody that would be watching, the goal of that kind of like visual structure was just, sometimes we get, as part of, as members of the community, as well as members of the board, will get inquiries from parents or members of the public that want to know who they should go to for this, this, or this problem, or how they should be able to resolve the problem. And so we were trying to create some sort of visual structure that would help us to easily direct people, but it is a complex issue, like you said. So more to follow, thank you.
I sent you a sample of the Board of Ed, like individual bios. I think I said like June 15th, we want them back by, so we can get to work on that. So if you could send those to me, you could choose your own picture, you have questions you can and can't answer, you decide what you want. You could put the liaisons that you're on, we really don't have committees. So we'll get those together. What that's going to be is in a PDF, this is the way the website works. It doesn't work like I think we want it to work, where your picture would be there, and your bio would be next to it. So underneath the board picture, there'll be a link there that says like Board of Ed Individual Bios. And we'll put it all together in one document. People click on it, and then your bios would be there in order, or whatever, however we decide to do it. It's optional, we said at the committee level, you don't have to do it if you don't want to. There are districts that have bios where some board members participate, and some don't. But it is an option, and if you can get that to us within a week with that picture, then we can start to work to put that together, with the hope of having it done, you know, by maybe after July 4th, we can get it up and running.
Thank you.
The Board of Ed auto reply is up and running, so we're able to do that. And you probably have seen that. The district calendar, the committee asked about like, how do they know that where things are going on in the district? And if you go to the district calendar on the webpage, you actually can see by color code what's happening at Byrd, Hamilton, and so on. And that's the best thing we have right now, under this current website program that we use. District website, we are looking into that. We've charged a member of our staff to do a deep dive into that, and to come up with recommendations for better, I guess, what would you call it? Programs, templates, yeah, whatever. Just a better system, where we can do more of the things that I think, not just that administration wants to do with the board, but everyone. Like, I'm just updating a little bit. So our hope is that by October, we have a recommendation, a budget number, and then we can get into a deeper dive there. And then finally, we have an alumni data collection network. And there was a member of the community that was doing it on his own time, and actually spending his own money, kind of running this. And so our administration in charge of communications, our director of guidance, principal, have all met, and decided that we're going to take that on, right? We want to lead that, we want to really try to use that data, use what exists, and then make it our own and go forward. And he was willing to do that, so this will be the last year that he puts it together, and then we'll take off and run with it. And our hope is that with the new website, that we can incorporate more of an alumni page, and get more information and things like that along that line. So more to follow there, that's, that'll be up and running. You know, in terms of us gathering the data, probably starting in the fall. And then hopefully with the new website, we could be, can execute that, you know, maybe by this time next year?
Yeah, very nice.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding community?
Thank you for going through all that. The only thing I would reiterate is, let's make sure, any ideas, questions, we do raise during the COW meetings, I think it's a great use of our time. And thank you to Tara, who's been doing a lot of work on the website, and hopefully the future website to clean things up. She, since coming on board about a year ago, has actually cleaned up a lot of dead links. Once we sat down with her and learned about the website, and how old it is, and what's all on it, like, it's really tremendous effort that she's put in already. So, and I just want to say thank you to her and what she's doing, and excited to see how we move forward.
Thank you. All right. All right, on to our business and fiscal management.
Okay, so for the preschool phase two, there are some change orders there. The telephone data outlets, was it $536? They were installed with enough room for our larger phones, so they have to relocate those data outlets. The fuses that were there did, actually did pass inspection, so you have to go from 500 to 600. And then in the secondary exit, there's a light and a sensor at the top of the stairs. It was a little dark there, so we're adding that. So it leaves us a remaining allowance of $7,800. We don't believe, we'll tap into all that. We think the only other allowance that's out there would be a little bit of a better hot water solution for the bathrooms. But we should be able to come in right at budget there. So that's the allowance for preschool. And then we have an addendum, for some reason this was missing in the last one, which was the paraprofessional pay raises. That was in the budget, though, right? So that's not missing there, it was just missing in the addendum. So you see the addendum, I think it was in backup, which just shows what the actual rates are for the 2526 school year. Again, I want to be clear that it was budgeted, just that the addendum missed that. So we had the 2% raises in there. Lunch prices for the 2526 school year. Most cases are going up 15 cents. So example would be, a plain pizza is now $3.10 versus $3, right? So again, no more than 25 cents or increases, as I'm looking at it here. Mozzarella sticks are $4.75 to $4.95. I'm trying to find the cookies, because that's the most popular thing, to see what those are. There we go, freshly baked cookie is still a dollar, so we're good there. So that'll still be a hot seller. And so, you know, again, small increases, but increases nonetheless. And so that's, that'll be on the next agenda. And then this new 403B, we have someone that does our, so when people, you know, if I invest in a 403B, it has to go to a third-party administrator, and there's a fee for that. So we use Omni, and it's $576, right? But it'd be an action item there. And then, any questions, sorry, on fiscal management?
Any questions? Okay.
All right. Just give me one minute here. So the RTUs. So the RTUs are your rooftop units here in the high school and middle school. To the best of our knowledge, they were installed in 2009, 2010, but there was no maintenance plan that we were aware of. So through, through the good work of our business administrator and director of facilities, they got up there and worked with the architect to kind of see the status of those units. Our director of facilities was concerned with them, quickly, really upon his arrival. And then when we had the architect go up there and assess them, what they did was they assessed them with one being the worst, up to 10 being the best. So one that's, something that's a one is critical, like that has to be replaced. And then a 10 being the best, the highest one we had rated was a seven. So they are in need of replacement. We came up with a plan, and I had shared that with you, to do this in phases. So the total cost of everything, we estimate with all 16 units on the roof, is about 8.2 million, and that would be, you'd have to float a question for that, and we're not going to do that, we feel we could phase it in. So as I had shared with you, we're going to work on the ones that are Conditions 1 through 4. Right, I think that was like $1.2 or $1.3 million. And the areas that they took care of, one was the front section here in the cafeteria, one was in the APR Fitness Center, there was a B-wing faculty bathrooms, men's and women's, the nurses' office, and the middle school gym was one of the two units there. We think that's the best option to do that, where we have enough funding for this project. I told you we had about $4.7 million in capital reserve. We anticipate as of June 30th, that does include what we call booked project for the press box, does not include the Hamilton Park lawn, which we are going to have to do next summer, we're going to have to tackle that. But I do think it's in the board's best interest to get ahead of these and start to replace these rooftop units. So we have a plan going on versus having to replace all of them, which it seems would happen when you floated that referendum back in 2009, 2010. I think that's just the best way to help with the, not float that question and increase taxes dramatically, I think we could fund it through capital reserve. Happy to take any questions?
How many of the units are, did you say it was between the one and four?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay.
So we'll try to get six done. Yeah, so six out of 16. And then after that, then they get to, there's two, three, there's three units at Level 5, and then I think there's two at 6, and I think the rest are at 7. I think if we get through this year, if we, you know, it won't happen until probably next, maybe over a break. They can do that because the crane has to come in, right? So it's probably next summer. But we should get ahead of it, and at least get these units that are in really critical shape to be repaired. And I think that, I'm happy that the business office has come up with a game plan to phase this in using capital reserve versus a question. Yeah, all right, so. And again, I think we're in good shape with capital reserve monies.
Mr. Cohen?
So is it repaired or replaced?
Replaced.
Replaced, and then do you know, have a sense of like, what's the life?
These last 15 years, so my gut tells me 15 to 20 on the newer ones, right? They're more efficient. And so there should be some energy savings there, but I would think our lifespan would be a little bit longer. I think 15 years up there on the roof is probably pretty good. And it gets to the point where we're repairing them too frequently, and you're bringing in outside resources. So if we get into a plan like this, my gut says within four years, we'll probably be able to replace all of them, maybe five years. And then you'll be on a nice plan where you'll have it laddered, basically, right? And every five or six years, we'll start replacing one or two, and do it that way, versus this whole number here of 16, which is, you know, you look at that and you think, oh my God. But they're really good, I think financially, we're in good shape.
Yes.
And I recall we did a bit of energy efficiency evaluation, and we looked at different options, how to finance upgrades. Is this something that we could reopen that process for specifically, considering it's basically like the heart of these HX systems?
Not for the ESAP, but what we did, Mr. Corey, was we tried to get through rod grants, the roof units replaced, and you may remember they were rejected by that. We were able to get some roofs out of it, a couple of projects, but unfortunately, we were not able to get the rooftop units. So our plan is, we're hearing rumors that there might be some more rod grant money in a couple of years, and we would apply for it then. But for the ESAP, we wouldn't be able to go back into that.
That's close, all right, thank you.
All right, all right, seeing no more questions? We can move on, all right?
Are we okay with proceeding with the plan, just to do the units I had mentioned? Is that okay? Because there is a cost, once we start that, the architect gets, okay?
Yes.
So we'll do that. You'll probably see that maybe in an August agenda, maybe a little bit in June, just to approve like the architect fees and things like that. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right, so can I have a motion to affirm the decision made in the CENTHIB 292401, after conducting a hearing at the request of the parents as reported by the chief school administrator during the June 9th, 2025 Closed Work Session Meeting? I need a motion? Ms. Calvez, seconded by Mr. Hayward? All right, if you can call roll, please.
Ms. Carisella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion, yours.
Thank you. If we, do we have any liaison reports that we want to mention?
I attended the HSA meeting for the middle school, high school, so just wanted to mention the great work being done by that team of wonderful parent volunteers. And Mr. Morelli spoke to the group, and did just a fantastic job. He's very excited about moving into the role, and I think he's going to be fantastic. He answered so many questions from final exam planning to just what's happening in the schools now. It was a really refreshing meeting, so, thank you to everyone.
Awesome.
And I also sent out the meeting minutes that I had gotten from, that I sent it to everyone. I thought that was actually helpful that they sent it to me, so, great. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to join Byrd School's HSA meeting, and it was a really exciting time to join these meetings. Spring social's just kicked off, there's a lot of activities that are coming to a close. So we're hearing a bit of the successes that these groups have been pushing for their schools. I don't have notes to share, but perhaps next time I'll be better prepared and share some of those highlights with you.
Awesome, thank you. The other item that I want to just get some dates, like for our boarder sheet over the summer, if we can, we don't have to determine it now, but if you're able to send, you know, some dates, I assume it would be like maybe a long Saturday?
some dates, I assume it would be like maybe a long Saturday that we're looking at and then we'll compile our schedule and, you know, figure out when's the best time to meet over the summer to do our board retreat and our goal setting and things like that. All right? So we can probably identify that by the last meeting, so, yes.
Did you say a Saturday over the summer?
It's probably best to be a Saturday because if it's going to be like a five-hour, you know, a couple hours, depending on how we want to do it. When we have our next meeting, our final meeting for the year, then we can talk about some of the things that we would like to accomplish and how we want to design our board retreat this year.
Okay. All right, it is 8:58 and I would like to open public comments for agenda items only. If you could please state your name and your address and you have three minutes. All right, we will close public comments at 8:58. All right, at this time, our public meeting will be closed and then we're going to go back into closed session, but we will not be taking any action during our closed session. So if I can have a motion to adjourn the public meeting, we have it by Stephanie and then Liz Calves, seconded, and then, yeah.
Who made the motion?
Stephanie Carousel.
And seconded by?
And then Liz. Calves.
All in favor, yes?
Yes, I. Any opposed? No, okay. The public session is adjourned.